Close meeting order.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any conflict of interest on our agenda today? No, previous minutes, it is a reading of the minutes.
December tenth, twenty twenty four, the board of supervisors met at nine A M when he and Hayden chaired presiding. Members present were Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossburg. Member absent Schultz. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the hiring of Zachary Rasmussen, Emergency Management Coordinator, E M A. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty five Ram twenty five hundred pickup from Team Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram for forty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy three dollars. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rossburg, to set time, date, location for public hearing regarding the budget amendment fiscal year twenty five for December thirty first, twenty twenty four, at three thirty five P M in the Board of Supervisors boardroom on the second floor of the courthouse. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to award bid for the lighting for the C C C S building upstairs to J P Electric Limited for ten thousand two hundred and eighty five dollars. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at ten fifty one A M. Agreements for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M. Proceeding to the next meeting.
Sound right to me?
Is that amount after the rebates, the ten thousand?
Right, the rebates will come to us. Should, they should come to us. We're the ones that pay the utility bill.
Really gonna get on those right away?
I think you have the order.
Get as good as we had to order them. That's exciting. That's kind of like almost the last piece of them. Carolyn, or Randy Glass, finished up downstairs.
Have we all been over there?
You, we met him that one day. He measured the door and that, so I don't know how long it takes him to measure a bill or whatever they gotta do with that door. And I, that's other than Jake's stuff. Downstairs, anyway.
He was my neighbor growing up. Neil, New Jersey.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, move on to supervisory parts. Anyone want to start?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Craig.
Mine will be brief. Wesco Christmas party last night at the Old Fashioned catered by Tiny's. It was very nice. Wesco is on pace to have a record profit year. They are currently servicing a hundred and ninety one members, which is an all time high. They actually rook last night because Rick Thompson from Audubon County Board of Supervisors is getting, he's retiring, so he's leaving. And he's been on for eight years, but they actually went farther back, but in two thousand and five, they were servicing ninety five people.
Wow.
So now they're servicing a hundred and ninety one. And a hundred and thirty six employees. Marcus Reiner, our new CFO, attended his first meeting last night and not much, of course, from a meeting standpoint, when it's a Christmas party, but we've got to bring our spouses. It was a nice evening. And our fence is done. So Dalton Hamlin got the fence done last week. And it's built, I think it was under what he had told us that it would be, so.
That's good.
That's good.
Craig on Wesco, did they say? Are they just reaching more people for the services they provide? Or what's the main driver of the increase in numbers?
They're reaching more people. Their employment services portion, where they worked with employers in the area and has expanded quite a bit. And I think that's one of the reasons why. They still have, they actually have a competitor of theirs in Carroll that has come to them to see if they could work with Wesco in that community services portion of it. So that's something that they've just been approached with last week, so. And Wesco has made a commitment to be more involved in the community, so people know more about what they do. And so there could be some other things moving forward that I'm not at liberty to get out in the public just yet. But that would expand it even more.
Well, that's a good sign when your competitor says or realizes, hey, they're doing something.
They're doing something that's really good. Can you do that for us?
Yeah, you know, you think about all the places you go in Dennis and anywhere that you see the Wesco clients. Is that the best way to foreword it?
Right.
You know, you see them working, whether it's at Walmart or Hy-Vee or the cafe over across this kitty corner, you know, and all the places. And they're, they're, you know, very friendly, outgoing. I mean, I can't get close to Walmart without Dan screaming across the park. Hey, you know, I mean, and they really stay, they stay busy and they're actually look like they're pretty productive employees too. So I mean, it's actually very successful and it makes them, you know, I don't know, you gotta, you gotta think that it helps them with their blossoming in the.
From a self-confidence level.
Yeah, exactly. There you go.
That would take suppliers and most fighting to get them is what they drain to run. To a place of business. I think it's amazing.
Any news on the housing situation that you got?
Their house that they're building, they hope it's done by spring. If you drive by on Sixth Avenue North, the siding is going to be the last thing that they put on, so they're going to be working on the inside and the inner. And it's already, they already have it full. They already have five people that are signed up to move there. So I think that's going to be something that Wesco looks at doing in the future as far as building more homes. They kind of have a four plan that they really like is, you know, there is no basement. And then they have kind of bedrooms in the corners, and then the middle's kind of all open with kitchen and.
No changes for the four to five?
Nope, they're, that's still the same. So they hope they can keep it at five. Five are far more profitable than four.
How many people do they, I mean, do they have supervision twenty four?
They do.
So I mean, what is that?
What's the ratio? I'm not sure.
I mean, do they have people there? Obviously.
Depends on the type of care that each person requires.
Probably, yeah.
Determines that. And I don't know, I guess off the top of my head, to be able to tell you what it is per level of care.
I could see that, because they, they're all, there's different.
Right, levels.
Because like Daniel can dry, you know, vanilla.
It's been a good board to be on. It's been fun. Learned a lot.
Too bad Rick's retiring. He's.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
And he's on Region Twelve with me and I enjoyed working with him.
Good guy. That's all I got for ever.
Thanks, Craig.
I really didn't have a whole lot.
We have one big thing.
We, I was gonna say, I thought our meeting Wednesday was very productive. A lot of good discussion there and a lot of good talk back and forth with the state officials. I thought there was, at least they were listening well. I mean, they were paying attention and I even would look over when we got onto some of the more tense issues, either they were nodding and hoping that we'd hurry up and get off that subject, or they're nodding that they were understanding.
I think I need to stop you though, Paul. You were looking at our new president of District Three.
Oh.
Oh geez, I didn't know I was in the presence of greatness.
Yeah, there you go.
Did a very good job.
So it's kind of as well, Jean is the secretary. It's Preston.
Yeah, she.
No wonder your face was so blank when I walked in.
Yeah, there you go. It wasn't too bad. I mean, that's, you just kind of got to leave the meeting and keep everybody engaged. Gosh dang, that was, I thought it was great engagement. You know, obviously, Don was very engaged as usual, as per usual.
Don Ash.
But I mean, I think a lot of good points were brought up. You know, we were talking about the things with the budget and asking them, you know, what? Just give us a reasons why you're coming up with some of these and then understand where we're at. And we actually got to talking about the property tax and and while we're all for cut property tax cuts as well, we still got to provide services. And so I brought up the additional funding mechanisms. I said, you know, there's a lot of things that we do, I mean, that require those property taxes to pay for the services that we provide. So I mean, we're gonna need additional funding. And we're not asking for anything out of you, Katie. We know you guys got bills too, but you know, I brought up the fuel tax thing again, the Farm Bureau had already once, you know, on the red fuel. They'd already approved like a five cent, Farm Bureau did, that they could go along with that, you know, years past, I don't know.
On red diesel.
Yeah, so I mean, just different things, but what we said, we don't want anybody above the counties to have any access to that money. It gets shared about the, across the ninety nine counties, goes to the engineers for secondary road use, period. That's what we kind of, the point we made with them. And they were all nodding, you know, like, oh, they're all full of crap, or, I mean, that's something we could think about.
Well, you brought up Surf Deck and how that's out of the county's hands and how this D O T is regulating those funds to be dispersed amongst the counties. And our concern with why that is concerning.
Yeah, it actually is probably one of the best run committee level things in the, at the state level, you know, commission or a committee, whatever you call it. I think it's probably what the engineers and the supervisor on that and the distribution of funds probably works as good as any, any organization in the state level. And not doing that, we just, we told them, we were worried about them commissioners, you know, we need money for this, and boy, you know, they really maybe don't need all that. And maybe something happens that way, we worry about that, you know, and then they kind of understood what we, what our, I don't know if they had it before, but I think they grasped what we were, they were picking up what we were putting down, I think. So I mean, and we talked about quite a few things and then they kind of gave us some updates on stuff they're working on. They really didn't go in too much about this year's tax cuts and where the governor's wanting to go. I seen that she hired our.
Lieutenant Governor.
Yeah. Chris.
I don't remember what her name was.
Pretty strong person in the Senate, so I'm sure she'll, I did pretty good lieutenant governor. I seen Mariah was standard and a few had some complaints about her, but everybody's got a complaint.
And there was a representative from both Grassley and Ernst that had been with me.
And. Yeah, Colby. I don't know who the new one was, and I don't know. Yeah, Feenster had a rep there, and I don't know who he was either. I'd never met him, and I thought I knew most of Feenster's people.
It's pretty wise that they had done that third district, a very solid district for them guys.
We had one of the best turnouts, I think, out of all the districts as far as supervisors.
That's what we were told.
That's what Rachel made.
I said, and she said that.
That was good. I mean, I, I mean, would you guess where they're?
Oh, you know, Ida didn't have anybody there. It's easier to say who didn't have somebody there.
Well, counties.
Nobody from Anona, nobody from Ida.
They're hard to get people.
You know, when you get them smaller boards, I guess that it would be tough.
I'd say they're between twenty five and thirty people.
Yes, there was twenty five there for sure. I didn't count, sorry. I was busy thinking about other.
And they took the roll call too, so I mean, come on, our minutes. I didn't quite follow. I wasn't understanding though, that one, we got to talk a little bit about our levies. And the one legislator said they'd like to cut more of our levies and get rid of all of it. And he said.
He was talking about supplemental too.
He was talking about supplemental. He said, well, some of the counties are abusing hypers and health insurance through their levies. And he didn't necessarily say supplemental, but he said, he talked about hypers. I said, well, if you get rid of that.
Hypers, health insurance. Like, even E M A gets financed through that.
Are you going to increase, or would we pull that out to pay for those?
Yeah.
Let's just say, because the, the general levy only produces so much.
That's why I said, so I said, are you going to increase the general levy to cover that? And he didn't say yes or no, but.
I kind of got a.
They're trying to get the dirty thirty back to the.
Well, go, go after them people there.
And now they're, yeah.
And that point was made.
They actually said that, that our, that our district was, was probably the best district, or not necessarily best, but does a group, real good job of staying, keeping their budgets in line. Well, then why are you pounding everybody, you know, I mean, there's no reward for doing a good job at this point.
Punished or need punished.
Yeah.
Right, but I didn't quite follow how, how, he didn't give an example of how they are abusing that.
Yeah.
Or how, I don't know how they would, because you raise that levy.
Right.
It gets published.
You budget for what you need.
Right.
You know, to cover those expenses.
And maybe there's something they didn't say.
You know, based on salaries, it's a, it's a formula. You figure it out how much you need, anyway.
And it was, I, I just kind of, at one point, I was kind of wondering if he understood all what supplemental was about.
I wouldn't say.
He just looked at a couple of things in supplemental, didn't realize there's other things.
I mean, elections are out of supplemental, E M A, is that a supplemental? I don't think it was, I think it was more cordial this year than it was last year. It wasn't as heated.
Yeah, yeah, that even Don was reined in, reined himself in somewhat. He was sitting right in front of me where I was standing in case I had to grab him by the shirt.
Now, I, I talked to Steve Smith from Guthrie at a Region Twelve meeting, and he said their District Four got really heated over the pipeline.
Did they really?
He said it was pretty, pretty intense there for a little bit.
We discussed that, but nothing ad nauseam, you know, I mean. I don't know, I, right now, you know, you're just kind of, just kind of sitting in limbo, because nobody really knows, you know, as long as South Dakota's in that state they're in, really.
Right.
I mean, I U B or the I U C has already put their ruling out.
Right.
So unless they figure out a way to get up through Minnesota and up into North Dakota, and you still got all that hurdle to get through, and that'd be more miles of pipe too. So I'm sure they're not interested in doing that in a big hurry.
I'd say probably the worst, man, worse is the wrong way to put it, but maybe we picked on that one legislative.
That one representative guy, I apologized to him a little bit there at the end.
He deserved it.
Yeah, he did. And he did. He did.
He would, he was trying to justify the mailer.
Yeah.
The mailer?
Yeah.
Yeah, more information that the taxpayers can't decipher.
Don mentioned that they had.
Talked about the money.
It cost them sixteen thousand dollars as a county to do their mailing, and they had three people show up or.
Oh, for their hearing?
Yeah, and the, the, the state representative said that it was worth it for them to spend the sixteen thousand for those three people.
Oh, again, it's part of our duty to inform the taxpayers.
What does he think we're doing out here? I was asking that, but I didn't want to get.
In Craig fashion, looks up and says, well, across the state of Iowa, it's actually just short of a million dollars that we've spent on, on these mailers.
Yeah, and where'd we get? Even if you had three, ninety nine, that's only three hundred.
The frustrating part is, is the, the state is telling us that they want to cut property tax, and then they mandate that we spend property tax on the mail.
That was a, we were in the mandate.
I mean, talk about being hypocrites on themselves. What they should have done is sent the money to every county to pay for the mailer, that they think it's that important.
For them.
State should pay for it. Instead, they dictate us to pay for it out of property tax when they say we need to lower property tax.
Which we made very clear, talking about unfunded mandates, so that's exactly an unfunded mandate.
Right, exactly.
Exactly, and that's just the cost of, that's just the cost of the company to do the mailing, if you hired a company to do it. That wasn't the software company that had to make, jump through hoops, communicating with the D O M to, to pull all that data in so we could produce a mailer.
Yeah, actually, right, by the time you figure your employee time and all that, it's way more than the eighteen or sixteen thousand that Don brought up.
I think he was the same legislator that wanted to cut supplemental too.
And it's the city and the schools, where is their skin in the game.
Right.
It's another one of the things where if you've never worked in, in this building, it's hard to understand what we're doing.
It does solely come on property taxes, not, even though they, more property tax, but it's county property that's.
Right.
Even Lucas tried to simplify that for you, but you know, tried to step in there and talk.
He did, right, he did, yeah.
Because he wasn't picking up what we were putting down.
That was an interesting meeting. It was, it was. Glad you brought that up. I kind of forgot about that.
Yeah, I thought it went real well. I mean, all things considered, there was.
It was nice to see that number.
They could have got a pretty.
Oh, that was the most I've ever seen.
And I didn't have a gavel either.
Oh, shoot.
How was I gonna keep any of that?
I'll have to get you that big one and you can throw it in your backpack and take it with you every time you go to a District Three meeting. Wimbo.
But otherwise, I thought that that, that was a good meeting. I mean, I picked up some stuff there.
Pretty smooth transition. Tim Fairchild, the current president, did not get reelected, so right off the bat, Jean opened up the meeting. Ty got voted in as president, or a secretary again, the way we went.
Yeah, thankfully, Jean stepped up again and did the secretary, and she takes a ton of notes. I don't know if you were watching, but I think she went through an entire pen of ink over there.
Well, I've, I've seen her note taking ability just here, yeah.
She's a note taker. So that works pretty good. We probably have to get her, one of them recorders, but then she probably, I don't want to listen to you guys again. Anyway, I didn't know we, I thought we did pretty well on, and, you know, talking about like the comp board, that was a pretty good discussion. Well, half and half in the district, half kept it, half didn't.
Okay.
So that was interesting to see.
It'll be interesting to see how it plays out.
Exactly, see how that works for us going forward.
It seemed to me the, the half that kept it all said that our comp board came in with great reports, explained where they came to, is reasonable amount, and the other half that didn't said that.
Their comp board just kind of basically come in there, threw a number together, probably didn't have a meeting longer than five minutes away, it sounded to me.
So it's interesting how, if your comp board was engaged and did a good job, they reinstated.
Was it, Don just said their comp board was sixteen percent?
Oh, I.
Or, I'm certain there's somebody.
Yeah, there was somebody.
That was that sixteen percent? No, it wasn't them. Everybody else was between two and a half.
I do remember that though.
Yeah.
That, so far, that had been talking two and a half, three and a half.
And it sounded like they were getting their, their compensation boards to come with practical numbers, not saying, okay, the supervisor are going to cut us in half, so, or worse, so let's give them an inflated number. I mean, it came in practical. So then you can sit there and actually work with the numbers, you know, I, the, the actual numbers. So it will be interesting to see how ours does this year. You know, I mean, we started out great doing something a little more detailed last year, and a little more, a lot more detailed than we had in previous years, so hopefully it can continue to. To create something good for us. Then otherwise, our E M A coordinator started Monday. I was down there to kind of greet him, walk him through a little bit.
Awesome.
Kind of what, Tim had, Tim had already been working with him and they did some driving around, looked at the towers and got him up on that. Obviously, Michelle this morning, she says, I already kind of hammered him. I sent him his budget stuff. And that, he was, and, and then Nert said he had to have it in on the third, and he was all wide eyed about that. And I said, well, wait a minute, you got a commission that you have to go through too, and we got that actually scheduled as soon as we could in January. It's going to be the seventh. So we'll sit down with the commission. What we're going to try to do is, and in the white paper, it actually says that the best way to help your E M A coordinator is to have a executive committee of the commission, you know, a couple, three mayors, or two or three mayors, and then obviously it mentioned the supervisor rep, and then probably the sheriff could participate in that. But it gives him somebody to contact quickly that can give him a quick answer on, on spending expenditures. If he's got an emergency expenditure, hey, I got a ten thousand dollar expenditure down in Manila because of the tornado, you know, I mean, something to that effect, or you know, different things like that, that'll be a pass through, you know, is that all right to write a check for that, you know, the different things that, that committee could, okay, outrun that one by the supervisors and.
How big of a.
For the executive, probably just three or four is what it actually says on that. I don't have that paper with me on hand, but it's three or four people. You know, typically on an executive committee, even like our big commission over at Central Iowa. We got thirty five people on that commission, and I think thirty five is the number, I'll quote me on that, but I think that's like five, four, four or five people's also on that executive committee. You know, the ones that are on it make them, it's like having me on it, so it's going to be a long meeting whenever they sit down, but if you had more than that, they'd probably never get out of it. But, so we thought, we're talking about doing something like that to help him especially get acclimated, you know, I mean, there's different things that have, never having had a full time position to get geared up for, for him, you know, as far as you know, the truck didn't really have anything to carry equipment with him that he might need to have, you know, I told him right now, I said, I said, we want you to get yourself a pilot's license for our drone, and that's what needs to be operating that, otherwise we got to find ways to get insured. This is stuff I kind of tasked him with. Like Cory Gaskell and Chad, I think, are the only two operators in the county, from my understanding. Does that sound right to you, Cal?
It could very well be. I'm just going through my head trying to figure out.
Pilot's license, they operate with pilots. So I told him to do that, and he's actually already started the process to get going.
That outfit, I think it's the Otter Boat that sells drones might be able to, or there's a guy in Harlan that might be able to help with a pilot license.
Yeah, he's going down to.
I guess G B H T S A might be able to help with that as well.
Does our extension office do that for all the?
I don't know if the extension does, but I know, got to be, it's a place that, let me make some contacts.
But we, he's, he's going to talk with the E M A coordinator down in Shelby County, who's, Cory is, speaks extremely high up, you know, Gaskell talks. So I mean, that'll be kind of his buddy to help him get going in this. We also sat down and discussed why we're on the drone subject. I said, what if we created a deal where, because you know, like Staley's have a drone for spraying crops? I said, what if we just had something, you know, just to alert the comm center so they don't get ten thousand calls now about, there's a drone up over, right, over east of Charter Oak? Yeah, I know they're out spraying today. So if Staley's would say, all right, we're going to be out spraying and just call into the comm center on the non-emergency line and say, hey, we're going to be spraying from such and such to such and such.
Problem, because every year you're going to see more of those.
Well, and that's my thing, is that it would, it would alert the comm center. That way, when somebody does call and they say, yeah, we're aware of it, thank you very much. If somebody out spraying, it's out spraying, you know, insecticide or whatever, you see what I'm saying?
That's curious, because that's one, they don't have to report to the airport already, and you got a pilot, you're.
Yeah, and I don't know what all their procedures are, but just something like that, because that's who the public's going to call.
I think you're, once you get your drone license, there's not much more to be a full pilot. So that's why, I don't, I don't, that, that one's frightening, eventually you will have to make contact with their local airport, letting them know you're flying them.
Well, you know, especially when you think about it, a lot of times them bigger ones can fly at the same altitude that you might have lifelike coming in on and stuff like that. Boy, you want to know if something's in that area, so you can warn.
Closer to the major airports, yeah, you definitely are in contact with somebody.
Well, look at how much of a hot topic it is out in New Jersey.
Well, that's exactly what brought up the conversation up between him and I. So, you know, we're, we're gonna, he's going to do some digging into that and see what that, what might be the best way forward, you know, to keep them. Because that seems to be the big concern when you listen to the news at night, is the public has no idea what the hell's going on. And if, if you call the comm center to report a, you know, one of these aircraft, and the comm center just, yes, thank you, we're, we're aware of it, these people are out spraying fields, thank you, thank you. And they, you know, appreciate your call. That starts to eliminate, okay, well, they're, they're, they're aware of it. So it's nothing nefarious going on out there. It's the farmers working, you know what I mean? So I think that's probably something that, and that's something I asked him to do too.
They had on the morning news yesterday, they're talking about it, and they said, please do not shoot them down. It could be a small airplane with people in them.
Well, at the very least, I can't imagine something like them spraying drones, that's probably pretty damn expensive.
But to put it out there, they must have had a number of them being shot at.
Well.
Fifty, fifty dollars, yeah, for one to do it.
Yeah, so that's. Yeah, so that's, that's something you want shot down. But the, uh, you know, I mean, I, I get the public's concern, you know, we've all been watching the news, what's going on over in Ukraine and and down in Israel with all these drones and stuff, so you know? I mean, I don't know that we have to worry about the degree, you have, better have your mind on things like that, so. Anyway, uh, that's, uh, all seems to be rolling pretty good there, and I talked to him this morning, like I said, about the budget stuff, and we're gonna help him get rolling there. Peggy's already sent me a deal about some advice to come out of the white pages there, so I think we're, we're getting him off to a good start, I hope.
I.
That's all I got.
I am, and Dwayne have been communicating about office space, so I gotta work, work through that. I talked to Dwayne about it.
But I know he wants, I know he does want his own office, so.
Yeah, I think, but I asked Dwayne, said they were communicating amongst themselves to figure that out, so.
You know, I just don't want somebody that's brand new to have to talk to somebody with thirty, thirty years, and say, yeah, I want you in my office, you know, I mean.
But I think that some part of that is also, not saying that he need, wants it or not, but there's a lot of history that can help to, to get a new guy started too, the possibility there.
It seems like a natural fit for that space for an EMA director, I mean, close to.
And a little history that when, when Dwayne, how that all transpired is, EMA said they could have a spot in his office years ago, so. Now, that don't mean it has to stay there, I'm not saying that, that's how it transpired to that spot, so. Anyhow, but I, they're, they're communicating, I just.
Okay.
There, I talked to him this morning about it, and that they're working on it, and I think there's another, he said something about Dr. Krabs' old office down there in PD, somewhere is possibly available.
Somewhere else to go.
Yeah.
Well, then anything that, and I would say this, I mean, obviously, boards in years gone by had their prerogative, but I don't think anything should happen in this building that she's not aware of and this board isn't aware of, you know, I mean, as far as assigning offices anywhere within the area, you know, I mean, now granted, PDs, then some PDs areas there, you know, so that kind of have to be negotiated with them, but I just think that, uh, you know, that was one of the things that got discussed. I mean, should we, if everybody knows where everything's going, you can see where every conflict that might be, I don't even mean personal conflicts, but I'm seeing a building, we, we need space for me, and we've, we've still got Jake in a closet and what have you, you know, I mean, I should be moving down to that other building in that bigger room, so I mean, but that's my point, different things like that. And then the, I see where we got something on the agenda about contractors, or my guests that might have something to do with that, is that right? I don't know, I didn't, anybody know why that's on the agenda?
Oh, you don't find.
Because of an email address.
Oh.
That's currently on the county roll.
Okay, well, I guess that's a whole nother can of worms, but the, uh, I, I just think that, you know, we, we, if, if just trying, I'm trying to word this, what I didn't misunderstand what I'm trying to say, but you know, things that, uh, different people will take upon themselves, that probably are the preview of other people, you know, like this board, or the auditor's office, or you know, different, you know, whether it's Chief Treo, or Rogers, reviewing what happens down there in the law enforcement center, so. I think those are the things, you know, you don't have, you don't have anybody's, they don't get their all their fuss up in a dander about something because, well, we didn't even know he was in there, you know, or, you see, you see what I'm saying? And, uh, trying to figure out what you're supposed to be doing, so I think that was what some of that was about, at least it was from what I was told. Uh, but if they're getting stuff worked out, you know.
I think they will, I mean, it's just not, will help them work it out, but.
Yeah.
Be nice if they work it out amongst themselves, but I think they will, that Don will help them work it out.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, IT and that, it's like we created through our, well, IT and then, I mean, the, the, we wanted a full-time EMA from this board, and we, I did.
Yeah.
So we've created two full-time positions that wouldn't really know office space to.
Yeah.
Both of them, so we're trying to create a mess ourselves, and we gotta try to figure it out, and that's why Jake's been in a closet for. So we try to get him figured out, so.
And he doesn't have a lot of guests, you know, I mean, now, the, the thing with like Zach, now I don't even know if that twelve by twelve's big enough for him in that event. He was saying, well, what if I have other, the other stakeholders for a meeting? He said, I'd like to be able to have, you know, where I got enough room in there for them. Well, if you got a chair or two, that's really all you need for an office, otherwise lay on the conference room that day that you're gonna have a meeting.
That's what we got it for, exactly.
Exactly, and that's what I told him, you know, and so I, I think he was grasping that, so.
Unfortunately, can I offer the shame of a lot of.
No, no.
EMA facilities right away here, so unfortunately.
No, no.
Obviously, half of ours that big to.
I, there was, there was word about another office, maybe you trade with one of the PD's office, it gets a little bigger, but I don't think he needs a little bigger. I think his truck's gonna be his office half the time, his, that twelve by twelve's gonna be half, his office half the time. I think he, I think he's got plenty of office.
So Terry, do people sign up to put a conference room through your office then, if they wanna?
They can, there's a calendar down there, we encourage them to.
In the conference.
Yeah, in the first, yeah, yeah.
The one where we voted in this year, the PD's conference room, gosh, that's right handy for him too, so, I mean, and I suspect.
He just needs to talk to the chief about he's in it.
Yeah, talk to chief about it, I mean, chief's been, I, actually, since I've been going down there talking to him, and life, chief's been real accommodating, you know, he really wants to help that be a good thing too, so.
So there's options, he's got options.
Yeah, I think it'll get worked out, I just, you know, we didn't, we didn't wanna leave that in his lap, that was something that Jean had brought up, you know? Gosh, he's a brand new guy, and here we're throwing something that somebody might get upset about right away, and I said, she said, if they wanna be mad at us, maybe, she said, they should just be mad at us. That's a good point.
Everything.
Yeah. That'll work for me, I think I eat up, well, I did get it all ate up, clearly, but I tried.
Kyle, you got anything? Are you traveling?
No, I, just the S Center meeting Friday, uh.
We didn't talk a lot about the, uh, juvenile detention service.
Yes, we did.
Last month, just to bring.
Yep.
Our meeting went longer, I would have liked to drive by the S Center, since we're there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I should have went up there and took a tour of the facilities up there.
But we didn't get out of there till, or three.
It was time to go.
Yeah.
It was time to go, uh, well, longer than I should.
Yeah, it went plenty long.
Yeah.
Maybe I'd.
Is it something here with you, Ty?
It was something I said to everybody, I said, now, now you're gonna understand what it means to have Jean and I involved in something, and you got us both up here, so, meeting might run long.
I think I failed to mention it, like the last, uh, we met our, uh, you know, solid waste commission. We met, we are gonna raise the, Earl Bach is raising the rates.
When was the last time they even did?
That's what I was getting at, I think the last time they raised their rates was like twenty plus years ago. So they were going from, quote me, ten dollars a ton to thirteen dollars a ton. And then there's kind of a, a plan to raise them after that, so, uh, it's nothing. I didn't think it was nothing out of stupid money that they were raising, it's being fair money.
It didn't sound bad, consider that how long it's been, you probably already got money ahead on that.
Yeah, they've always been treating us very fair on that, so I, well. And that, uh, we do, I think the basement is done, like we said, we talked about that already, and. Oh, I'll be, Louis will be, as soon as that's all finished up, probably wait until after the first of the year, get Louise moved in over there, so then we can start remodeling her room.
Oh, sorry.
Here's the chairs.
That's what I hear.
Get, uh, get Louise moved, get Paul, Paul new, get that remodeled, get his people moved, and then we can get Jake moved, and get their stuff moved, and keep that, get that dealing going, so.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
Yeah.
All them floors, I mean, do we have, when, when we were doing that in the budget, were you doing that for all the floors in the courthouse that needed it, like yours and over here in particular?
When I was doing what?
When we did the amendment.
When we will do the amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't done it yet. Yes, yeah.
Okay, I would just.
It's all the, it's not the third floor, but it's the second and the first floor.
I thought it was all of them, but I just wanted to.
Oh, dude, we walked by it the other day, where it's, uh, doorway, where it stops down through the hallway.
Where we got holes in the floor?
Mm-huh.
That's in there too.
Which when we started doing budgeting, we should look at capital improvements for that hallway and.
Isn't that, does that, do we have, we don't have that then, then?
Not the entire, goes to that safety door.
Okay.
That's as far as we went, was all like floor.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Currently like floor.
The side trim and all that stuff.
Yeah, it needs, it needs some attention.
I mean, I think they probably won't want that rubber, cause the moisture, it ain't like wood, it'll absorb water, so I suspect, but boy, it doesn't look very.
Needs a better adhesive to stay attached.
And Paul included, he had all in on the gravel summit, he's got it scheduled for June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, okay.
Is it June eighteenth?
Yeah.
He said he was, like last week, that he was working on that.
Yeah, I think it's got it locked down for June eighteenth, you'll have, uh.
Gravel summit.
Something we did, ooh, jeez, like I said, Dave and I were the, like, two.
Yeah. Educational.
I have representatives from Iowa State.
An engineer.
Engineers out here with Crocs, and we had open to like the whole western side of state for county engineers and supervisors to come, and we just talked about gravel and different gradations of gravel, and what they deem to probably be the best mix of gravel, and different things we can try to uh, stabilization and stuff of that nature, and this is kind of where we got us on, think, the thought process of what we did down by Eastons and, uh.
Even the mixing of gravel that we do with Stratford, of adding limestone to our, um, gravel mix we get from them. How to best use our dollars.
Go further on, on the same money, so. You know, yeah, and trying to figure out ways to maybe search for other avenues to get there, or come together with different counties to, right, buy our own, I don't know.
It la, it was very informative last time we had it, you know, there's a lot of gain, information.
Since it's been so long, oh, quite a few years since we had one. And with all the new supervisors, again, I think it's probably time to have another one, so.
Well, in the big picture, nothing has changed, aggregate is still very difficult to get, and transportation is a big cost, so it's.
You know, while you're on that subject, you know, when we went up there and toured that, you know, they said that this Gilmore Shell, that's probably even what Fort Calhoun's is part of.
Yeah, I think it's all the same shell.
And it's underneath us, it's just so deep, because our elevation goes up over this way, you know, heck, that far that way, it's the highest point between the rivers, you know? But, uh, I wonder if that's ever something that you try to get a grant from, to be able to help start a quarry? A better location over here, I'm not necessarily saying Crawford, but over here, where you can get to that Gilmore Shell, cause that's good rock.
At some point in time, though, as transportation costs continue to grow, it's gonna be cost effective to dig a deep hole, to get to it, and cut your transportation costs.
That's what I thought, you know, if the Corps of Engineers could help us.
Did that one supervisor say that when he started on the board, gravel was two dollars a ton? Is that what he said?
That was either, was that Clint, Don, or, uh?
And now.
Craig, what about me up?
I remember him talking about that, and I thought, well, that sounded amazingly low, but you know, I mean, I know the cost that I see even yet compared to what I would, when I'd go haul something out of Thorke.
Cause they're trying to make the state legislators understand why our budgets are what they are.
Yeah.
Right, and at that time, they had, or they had up to seven of their own quarries in Clinton.
And now they don't.
Right now.
Right.
Mm-huh. Should have wrote all them numbers down, so we don't forget them, so when our farmers call complaining about this gravel mixture that we put on the road, hopefully we can help them understand why we go with that cheaper stuff.
And we're the only county that actually grades our gravel, I mean, anybody else, they just gets what they get, I mean, we're the only ones that actually make them wash it.
Put a blend, put a blend and wash out the fines and.
Right, so, but either way, Western Iowa's all in the same boat with this problem.
Yeah.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, so it might be, you know, I mean, like I said, I was just, as, as we were sitting there talking about it, I thought, I wonder if that'd be something Army Corps of Engineers would help with, maybe, maybe not, but maybe?
Never know.
Yeah, I mean.
Appreciate you bringing that up and getting that ball rolling.
Don't hurt to wa, no, it never hurts to ask those things, Craig.
I always figured even if Crawford County, if we have deep laden gravel, there was thirty foot of odor burden, someday it's gonna be worth our time to dig it out, you know?
Exactly.
So if we're ever looking at purchasing ground to build a new county shop, well, maybe we should find someone that's got gravel underneath of it.
Good point.
Bugger. Um, we covered District Three, that was very good, congratulations.
Yeah.
I did have Reg twelve meeting last week, that was kind of business as usual, went over the, uh, financials, and we had the different executive director reports, and transit reports, local assistant reporters, business as usual. If anything, transit was down a little bit, and it flows with time of year and holidays and things like that. We did do Rick Hunsucker's evaluation as executive director, which, of course, he had very high remarks on all of his evaluations, he just does a.
Doesn't surprise me.
Phenomenal job there.
Supposed to retirement?
You know, we talked about that, not to, I guess, say something I shouldn't, um, he was very candid with us, he goes, I, I really like my job, he goes, I don't know what else I'd do or where I'd go, he goes, yeah, I'm getting closer, but, you know, if I did retire now, and he goes, I just like what I do, and I could go elsewhere, I could go elsewhere and make more money.
And we like what he does too.
But, he just, I, I just, the staff we have that, you know, whoa, it wouldn't take crap, but the staff he built up there are just the best, I mean, they just do a good job, and that's evident in the dollar amounts, what they do, services they provide, federal grant money, they go after transportation money, the, just even the meat poultry loan fund. I mean, to be able to get fifteen million dollars from USDA to put on these programs for the, you know, for the whole state, you know, where it's not just our six county area we're helping.
Mm-huh.
Money's coming through Reg twelve, that's helping all over the state.
You know, makes it available, so it gets paid back with people here.
Um, but yet.
Cause that meat and poultry, now that'll be like a revolving loan fund, won't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's always gonna be available through.
Right, as they keep paying off, and, um, the other thing that was drawn up is out of all of our regions for different things, every county of, of the six counties feel like it is very fair and equitable. No county feels like they're being left out. I mean, the funds that come in, we're very conscious of how they're going. In fact, a prime example was, we had Iowa Bicycle Coalition presentation that meeting, and this executive director Luke Hoffman was requesting like five thousand dollars for a bicycle study for trails. But it really was only gonna, to us support majority, Green and Guthrie, and we denied it, or we said, no, we're just not gonna do anything at this time. And not that you don't wanna help them out, but he said, uh, you know, in essence of what we do, we like to make the citizens spend money that truly helps out all six counties.
Yeah, our six, yeah.
You know, maybe down the road, as it expands into the other counties, we may not be able, but I, I think every county really watches that.
I think, you know, like, if you had brought up that, on that, like the rotary rose that the referee clubs trying to get done. You know, because that's gonna connect us into the, up to the Lakeview and the Carroll Trails, and so that does kind of affect more of our base six. Good thought.
Sound good.
On the bike, but.
Good meeting, um, not much else for it, I got detailed if you guys want it.
Paul. Good morning.
Morning.
How's everyone?
Good, how are you?
Good. Um, yeah, nice weather, a little icy with the weekend. Uh, we did a, you know, a little preemptive move there on Friday, cause it just seems like we, uh, you know, get caught on Friday evening about five o'clock, when everybody's moving home, and all of a sudden, that's when it sets in and gets icy. And I think it really helped us out on Saturday morning, so, uh, yeah, we have a nice Saturday and Sunday again a little bit, didn't go out on Sunday, but then Monday, yesterday morning, you know, foggy, just kind of damp and icy again, so, you know, those, those little things like that cost us more than sometimes in a twelve inch snow. Because you're just, you're, you're. Because you're just, you're, you're putting all that mix out there, you know, and that's the expensive stuff, and you gotta do it multiple times today.
Rain washes it right back off.
Washes it off, and it gets worse, the DOT, I think, uh, Brian, I think a lot of that got washed off and it didn't do anything, you know, so as I said, every storm has its own little thumbprint, and it's no different, that, I think Mullinawall we did pretty good. I talked to Verdi on Sunday night, you know, and he wanted to pass on how good of a job he thought everybody, everybody did over there, so, yeah, he's doing good by the way, too, good, so. Anyhow, um, we've got the letting uh for the uh Bridge and Vale on the twenty eighth, thirteenth, excuse me, February, uh, Bridge Crew is over taking out the other bridge, the Vale Bridge.
Really?
Yeah.
Good weather, you know, it's.
Good weather, you know, so we'll, I don't know if we continue, I mean, the ten day forecast looks really good, so might just kind of pack away at it and get rid of it after we can, so getting material staged, get the bridge out.
What's it do with it then, take it out?
Uh, we just, I talked to Monte Creighton this morning too, yeah, it'll just get scrapped. Now, unless somebody wants that, you know, the truss, those pony trusses, I mean, they have some values, probably a walking trail or light duty bridge somewhere, but and we have never salvaged one of those just because there's you know, there's so many of them around.
Gotcha.
But um.
It took one of them to Sleswig.
Um.
On the walking path.
Yeah, there's one up there, there's one out here, so there's a couple of them that have been salvaged, um. I know I got a call uh out here.
Conservation need anything?
We've got, we've still got a pony, or excuse me, a bolstering truss up at Sleswig and then we've got that pin connected truss laying down here that are available.
Nope.
So, um, I know, uh, I got a call from Golf Course Board Member about, you know, selling them one of them for a walking trail out there, which I don't know that I'd be opposed to that, it'd still be in Crawford County, it'd be generally public use, and I said, well,
Yeah.
Basil up there, no, probably not the Rainbow, but the, maybe that pin connected truss has been laying there for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Might be a good one out there for a walking trail that we could work with somehow, you know? So I think the objective is trying to preserve them somewhere here in the community and then they'd be paying the cost, so that would preserve one of our bridges.
If you could just sell that lead bridge up there, maybe one with a cost or replacement value, that'd be awesome.
That, that's the one that's still there, that we took, well, not the lead bridge, yeah, yeah.
They could sell up their cost of replacement value, I mean, that.
No, that will never happen, sorry. Nice try, yeah, yeah, that's a, that's, you know, that'd be an expensive bridge project, probably a month and a half plus.
Not too.
Yeah, because it's long and some roadway realignment. Um, but the other one took, we took from uh, there were Gregel's Rat and uh.
Save Bar.
Save Bar, yeah, so that's the one that's in Sleswig, now that we kind of talked about.
That's a rain lord.
It's a rainbow, yeah, and that's one we talked about using out here at the park sometime in the future to replace that wooden one that's starting to age. So, you know, as long as they get used in the county, that's the main thing, whether it's another town or.
I think that'd be a great thing, I fear for that wooden bridge, because Rainbow Trust is a very unique bridge to start with.
Put a couple of approaches on that, put that right in the middle, just kind of complement, you know, the, the bridges of Yellow Smoke Park.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, so that may be something coming here and.
Nice doors themselves.
I like them.
Yeah, um, so, so we are continuing with the Bridge Crew, uh, activities just as, as weather permits. Uh, item four there is that motion to approve the transfer of about, well, it's right at half of the rural basic funds from the Rural Fund to the Secondary Road Fund, so. See the motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion, transferring one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second, I have a second, any discussion? This is pretty typical of what we do for, I mean, for one or the other, so.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All call. Oh, yes, thank you. Kyle.
All right.
Craig.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye.
Hey, you know, Ben and Kathy, we were talking about the timing of this, and I said, well, you, you know, you want to treasure, obviously, make sure that there's money in the account to transfer, but also, you know, the revenues come in September, you know, is when your first half come in and then, you know, we do the second half of this in June and those revenues come in in March, so kind of coincides with, you know, getting revenue into the rural fund, so, and that's what we split it up, and it's always worked well for our department too, so. Um, the only other things I have is the uh, safety meeting, lunching down uh in Manila on Thursday, so we're all welcome. Haring Fest for those of you who are interested, I think they've signed up.
What's that?
What's that?
What time is lunch?
What?
Burn it up.
What time are you up?
We're gonna start at nine thirty and um, go till like seven thirty, we've got some, you know, safety programs and along, while that's going on, people are going out fifteen minute intervals to do the hearing test, and that'll just be trailer setup, parking lot. And then around less thirtyish, you know, we'll have our drawing for roadways. Thank you and appreciation to the guys and then lunch, so.
Is the safety on?
Uh, it's a, uh, now a trooper, but there used to be more vehicle enforcement officer, but it's one of those motor vehicle enforcement officers gonna come and talk about CDLs. Um, the trainings and CDL requirements, load security, uh, just basically a lot of the issues associated with heavy balling.
Okay, Darren Ladyvol is there to do that?
Assistance with the food or whatever for that.
Just taking care of.
There we go.
Yeah, we'll take care of.
All right.
Yeah.
Darren, I got it. Did Darren Ladyvol, you're coming over here to do that, Greenan?
Uh, no, that name doesn't sound familiar, but I, I saw a presentation at the midyear conference, our County Engineers Midyear Conference, the guy was awesome. You know, and I was hoping to get him, but anytime we've had him, they, they're usually pretty good, but this guy was really good. And so we're gonna get kind of his presentation, but I think it's gonna be a different officer, so.
Darren's an old Charter Oak guy.
Okay, yeah.
But he's over in Central Iowa.
Yeah, yeah, so, and that's, I don't remember the guy's name, or something like that, we presented around July, but.
Should I check him out?
So, um, yeah, so, you know, kind of nice time to show off the shop, get everybody together and.
I think the guys are excited, I talked to Jared last night, had a concert in Manning, that we had with the kids, and he's like, are you ready for this secondary roads? You know, to meet, yeah, I think they get a lot out of it and they enjoy going to all of it.
Yeah, and they all can gotta get together, you know, the guys up in, Rick gets in Charter Oak, don't get down to Vanilla very often, and so it's kind of nice to bring everybody together for a little while and and to see the new shop, they'll just be jealous or dream about what they may have some in Charter Oak.
Little foul.
So.
I didn't bring this up in our works, you got here, time, um, we're gonna have no time, we still good for one P M?
Yeah, we're gonna meet afterwards.
Corey's on, I know Sam said that was good, Corey, is that still good for one P M? To look at Beer Can Alley? Or she's not listening?
He's muted, that's.
Sorry, I couldn't get it unmuted, yeah, one o'clock will be fine.
You, you just, we'll call you or meet us at the secondary road shop at?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
Yep, that'll be fun.
Thanks, Corey.
Okay.
So, have one.
Yeah, I think, probably have Sean and Tim go along or whoever, you know, go on too.
We're gonna look at that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and then the Grainer Surfacing Summit, June eighteenth is locked in, so it's a Wednesday. Um, so we'll have uh, this uh, Alio Seal, I see the seal on, uh, he'll speak about oversized loads and how that's impacting our roadways, so when the invite goes out, it'll go to Jason and to, you know, Senator Shulson and Representative Holt. We'd like to have both of them there and maybe any of the other representatives in the area. Um, Senator Shipley.
Everybody that's included in the summit.
Yeah.
Any county it is, I'd have them have their people there.
I, I, I think it's important to, to have them there to hear this presentation.
They should have had this presentation where they passed that.
Overweight limit.
Always at that, I don't think a lot of them really want to listen to us.
What were you?
But anyhow, you know, I haven't picked a spot yet, uh, last time we had the Crocs, I don't know, I guess, you know, you'll have to decide whether you don't want, you know, a ten dollar, you know, registration fee or something to help pay for lunch, um, or you want to just do it, I guess, uh, but uh you know, I'll kind of send something out two or three months ahead of time to kind of save the date, let me know if you're, if there's interest, so we can kind of get a feel for how many people might be coming. And then, you know, we give a month out, send out another invite and try to nail that number down, you know, to get pretty close to what we're gonna have, so.
What will the hours be?
Uh, it'll be ten o'clock till noon on Wednesday, June eighteenth. And so Alio will talk, Jeremy Ashlock, these are both Iowa State University, they're associated with the university. Um, Jeremy will talk about grainer surfacing optimization, you know, he's doing a lot of research, actually doing some right here in Crawford County on uh, you know, optimizing grainer surfacing mixtures. And then Lee Burkey, who is the uh, research engineer for the Service Bureau for the County Engineers Organization, he'll talk about kind of current research, some of the things they're doing to look at, you know, advancing the cause of grainer surface roadways, how can we make them better, so. So that'll be the, kind of the, the, the program and, you know, I'll open it up then, some open discussion amongst the counties to talk about challenges they have and opportunities and so.
You know, I don't think it's the end of the world to charge a ten or fifteen dollar.
Yeah, ten won't cover the cost of a meal, it'd have to be fifteen or more.
Never know how many are gonna show up, but even like District Three, it isn't.
Yeah. I mean, I suspect there could be fifty people if you invite, you know, six to seven counties and then speakers and representatives and I, I, the last time I didn't invite any of the industry suppliers. How you guys feel about that, um, yeah, could invite any other Hall of Materials, Stratford gravel to come.
Not being bad, do they pay for the meal?
Um, I could look into that, have them sponsoring, you know?
I like your, your asphalt golf day, it turned up. Never know how big.
Yeah.
Might not, not be much discussion about.
Yeah, that's not what you want to do, uh.
But, yeah, it might not hurt.
So.
At least they can hear the challenges we're facing.
I could touch base with them and kind of, you know, I don't know where it would be a good spot to have it.
Other than. Boulders and have it catered.
We, we, we could have it if Boulders and have it catered, which is kind of what I was thinking, might not be a bad option.
Right.
Um, yeah. See, these are all.
Sounds good, I hear it, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. How was that a lot of fire? Ty, you gonna get it?
It's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Where'd you get this?
I like them, don't you, they fold in the middle.
They fit in the middle.
They can fit in, mate.
It's hard, see, put it in your pocket, can't break it.
I need to know where you got those.
You can get a flat set, that's a case that attaches to your phone too.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm, Chuck Downey has a.
Sorry. Looking at that thinking, I hate carrying a damn thing, I gotta have a pocket.
I want something I can put in my pocket while I'm golfing and not break them.
Yeah.
And then go in the clubhouse and read them in.
And then you can actually read something, yeah.
So that's it.
I didn't have any readers in there.
Christmas present for my kids.
Post stockings.
Two of them for seven dollars.
Okay. My kind of stuff, okay, so anyhow, uh, that's, that's where we're at with that, and uh, so the, the uh, all employees have the Christmas Eve off, that, that, that's all, including secondary road employees. Unless it's, unless it's, you know, and. Right, I mean, but it's a holiday for them, like, because you have Christmas Day and then Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
Because that's what I was gonna tell them on Thursday, remind them that according to what I saw, that's what we had, so, weather looks good. Yeah, I don't see any bad weather over the Christmas holiday, at least at this point, so that knowledge changed, but.
Watch out for them clippers, come in and ruin our party.
They can, they can, so, well, we'll uh. We'll ask them, so when you're with.
So good.
Our, our fence trial got delayed again, so it was supposed to be today at ten, so.
Hey, I didn't bring this up when I was with Buddy in May, but I did ask him.
Thank you, Paul.
Organize where he can give us a quarterly report, not like Paul gets a pair every week, but Paul's got a lot more going on. But I don't think it's a bad idea for the people of the Crawford County to be able to.
You guys?
Yeah, see.
I don't make any plan for. Sure. I don't know, it's an idea, but at least he was pointing out to me that, that'd be great, quarterly report, I mean, it was forwarded to me the other night that Winona, I think Winona County, the sheriff's report was on Facebook for the month.
Yeah.
Well, oh, I'm not saying Roger has to, but, well, it's nice, so yeah, quarterly report from E M A.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking about the same thing I was suggesting to Roger, you know, if he did a quarterly one to the board, because when you speak to us, you're just speaking to the whole county through that thing especially. And then the talk recording and. And there's things that he can't tell us, obviously, where you can't be privy to stuff that's in an investigation, but still, things they're working on, school visits or anything, it'd be good to, for the people to know what's going on, you know? Then they don't question, well, or the sheriff's department even do, you know, or what's our E M A guy even do?
I thought that was.
Any of ours did, you know, I mean, gosh, it sounds like, I mean, let's talk to some of the other supervisors out there, even it sounds like Public Health even comes in and gives us.
They used to.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not trying to create any work for anybody, I'm just saying, these are some of the things that I've heard at meetings. Seems good to let the folks know what's going on.
Right. Well, let's move on to contractor policy.
Before I forget, we're, we're, we got a, we got a point on taking next Tuesday off, did we?
What, what's next Tuesday, the twenty fourth?
Yeah.
We were gonna do something Monday.
Meeting on Monday.
Meeting on Monday, okay.
Yeah, I thought we were meeting Monday.
I won't be here on Tuesday.
All right.
Building will be closed.
I just don't want to run into the same problem we did, that we had to.
Well, that's why I think we were gonna do it Monday.
Monday, same time, nine AM Monday.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
What do we have cooked up for the cash count?
That'll be the thirty first.
Thirty first.
In the afternoon. Okay, now, now let's move on to contractor policy, I didn't know how to treat contractors.
Go on ahead.
Jake, I'll take it, this is that email link that we had gotten from back in.
Possibly, I don't recall, yeah, we, we were talking about how to, as an example, we're trying to figure out how to move forward with the E nine one one manager and how we treat that particular individual, but furthermore, we don't really have, I don't know of any policy, if there is one, on how to treat a contractor for the county. Um, and I was just looking for a little bit of guidance, I'm not necessarily doing anything actionable today, I'm just looking to see what we can do to get the ball started, so, um, with what services I provide that individual, that sort of thing, um.
How many current contractors do we have?
To my knowledge at this.
County at this point.
To my knowledge, it's just one.
Just nine one one.
Yes, unless there's another one.
You don't have contractors.
Not really a contractor.
Not, not necessarily, like, that's not a that's working on a daily basis.
Consultant, consultant, thank you.
Consultant, okay, so.
Well, like contractors and consultants and all that stuff's gotta be bonded, you know, I mean, there's, that's a whole different thing than an employee, so I don't know what, what, you're gonna have to pull me in the question.
So, like, for instance, um, do, do I provide them an email? Do, do we provide them the space on the network for business continuity? Do we do any of these things as far as, um, from, from my perspective, how do I handle such individuals?
Well, I think it's gonna, I mean, if you're talking in general, I think it's gonna depend on what they, what their role is.
Right, and, yeah, because I, I mean, obviously.
Not a county employee, that's where I've had some questions on how we should be treating Dwayne.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he's got access to the building.
Mm-hmm.
He's got access. I mean, where's the liability there?
Right.
That's what we gotta kind of consider, where's the liability, insurance purposes, bonds, I mean, I, like, even, like, UPS, I, Mid America, sorry, IP, Mid America over there, I remember even their mowers had to have some, you couldn't usually get a local person to mow because they had to have like a fifty thousand dollar bond to mow on their property.
Hmm.
And don't quote me on that exact number, but it was an outrageous number, so.
Have you had any other consultants or contractors wanting emails?
Well.
I mean, I know, I know what we're trying to get to, but I'm just trying to gauge them.
No, because none of them have re, to my knowledge, they've never needed to have that type of business or, or standing within, like, for instance, everyone I've worked with, they don't require, it's only on a short term basis. Like, for instance, everyone I've worked with, they don't require, it's only on a short-term basis, they don't really require an email, they don't require. They're not doing something on a regular basis, in and out.
So, I just clarify. I think what you're asking is that, because we have one consultant with a county email. You want to have a policy that regulates or shows if other consultants ask for an email.
Potentially, or, or something dictating to me how I'm supposed to treat the E nine-one-one manager.
Why, why does he need a cut, did he explain why he needs a county email?
Well, we, what we did was we just kind of grandfathered him in, he paid for the license, um, as far as. Well, he had a D-Zink at Crawford County dot Iowa dot gov.
Yeah, but that was.
That was assessor, he moved, we moved him out of that and we cut off his access from the assessor side of things. And then just kind of shuttled him off into his own island.
Have you looked into, talked to Jack Reed about any potential policies? Or have you talked to any other counties to know how, uh, nine-one-one consulting type position is treated?
I, I've talked a little bit with Joel Roney about it, he, he mentioned to me that most, I, almost, the biggest takeaway I got was. It's a consultant contractor situation and I, and from there, I just delved into my own experience in a similar position, okay? I've worked in the organization, you know, as far as getting emails and being part of the distribution list. They had spots for me to be able to accomplish the services that was written into the contract. And then we went from there.
Someone we need to have, should have our county nine-one-one email address.
That's all you mean, yeah, I mean, I don't know that, you know, like, through, for the official, like. Crawford County nine-one-one commission or nine-one-one, uh, your border commission, whatever it is. And then at whatever dot gov or something, you may maybe have something of your own, I don't know that.
I'm just trying to think, this, this contractor, whatever, how that, yeah.
I don't, you know, here's the thing, is if you have, if they have a county email that's similar to what we have or anybody else that's an employee of this. Organization.
Sure.
And, and that's how you identify that as an county employee, when in fact they aren't a county employee, I don't know if giving them one of our. Emails is the right way to go.
Right, and, and this is what I'm looking for, so.
That's why I was thinking that there should be a designated email address for that department or.
Yeah, instead of saying Dwayne, we put E nine-one at Crawford County dot Iowa dot gov.
And whoever the nine-one-one.
That way if Dwayne.
I don't see him having any access to.
No.
Access secure stuff.
No, he does not have any of that.
Cause that way, Dwayne retires, whatever. That way, that's, that email. This is the next person.
Cause you probably get bills through that email and, and then you don't, it don't vanish and then you gotta mess when the next person's doing it.
That's how that should be, that should be a zone, a separate email address, not connected with any person, just Dwayne, not just no person.
Yeah, I agree.
Or nine-one-one itself.
Right.
E nine-one-one at Crawford County dot Iowa, that would be, that would be my solution.
That's how I would think.
Okay.
That way it's perpetual, but no matter who holds that position.
Right.
So that's why you're really after, how you should handle this. See, then that ain't worried about him being a contractor, it's going to the physician, it's going to that commission and then he is the consultant.
We should, way it should be, you know, it shouldn't really matter the individual in that sense and.
And you can control a password as if that position, somebody changes or somebody gets, you know, problem, pickle, whatever.
You control all that anyway.
Yep, and then, yeah.
Lock them down or whatever.
Right, the only one we gotta make sure we can trust is you.
Then I'm an employee, so.
I would think that's how it should be handled.
Okay, well, move forward with that.
To be fair, I don't know, we talked to Dwayne, see what, how, if that's all that gets access through that. Maybe you just need to switch that over, take it, change the. I don't want him just delete everything that he's got going on.
Absolutely.
Well, we might miss emails then that are important to E nine-one-one.
No, my thought is what we could do in the interim. Because he's paid for the license for the full year at this point, um, is maybe putting a place holder in front of him. Meaning, you still have E nine-one-one that we've been talking about, everyone emails to that, but it does get forwarded down to. D-Zink, this way we don't lose any continuity.
Right.
And then, um, when the next guy comes along, whoever it may be. We just transition that into an actual inbox. Yep, and then this way, cause this, cause I hate to have to manipulate all that dat- data, cause anytime you do that. You could get some, a loss, so.
Sound good.
Okay, and then, and then this way, there's no, well, I paid for this, you know, I should be getting it, you know, that situation. So, do you have some deal?
If you put the nine-one-one, salted underneath the direction of the newly hired EMA director.
Yeah, that'll be kind of nine-one-one's board, that's their decision, but, yeah. He would still need a separate email for bills. And things that he's getting, cause that board's gonna need to be reported to still separately.
State communications and.
Yeah, that isn't like they come, would come together fully, I mean, obviously for pay purposes, you know, it would be probably linked. That'd have to be something that Terry could tell us how to figure out, but if you did that, it'd still have to be that.
Nine-one-one board.
Everyone that does that, that I've talked to, uh, they, they still have, this person still has to report to each board separately.
Sure.
Two different base streams, two different recording streams.
And then there's no issues with me having space carved out in the server for him to put his data on, this way we have continuity. Cause it is on a E nine-one-one computer, all his data is on an E nine-one-one computer at this point, so.
But they own the computers.
Yeah.
That commission or their board.
Right, right, and if something happens to that particular individual at any given moment, it would be nice to be able to just bring someone else in and have. Them, you know, see what was going on, okay, he's got all this data, these are the policies, these are the things that we're doing. And then be able to just move forward with it, that's my, that's my vision for that, having it carved down in the file server for him, or for them, excuse me. Is any, any issues with that at all?
No, I don't, that was ever, I, yeah, I mean, if it stays the way it is.
That's pretty much what's gonna happen.
Transition to the next person, but if they just combine them, I suspect that the, you wouldn't need more than one computer.
No, but my only, the only problem is.
Is cost shares for individual stuff.
The, the kicker is, is that anytime that, you know, a device dies, we always want to start the data off of that.
E nine-one-one is not part of our general fund.
It isn't part of it at all.
No.
I didn't know if I got, it worked like, yeah, cause that's.
Are there costs that need to be incurred to the commission? Just asking, I don't know.
I would, I would, I mean.
For that space?
For that space, for any kind of support, yeah, I would say yes, but you're gonna have to tell us what that cost would be. That's a good point, thank you.
Maybe, I mean, we can do a quota, we can do a quota basis system on that particular share and say, okay, we pay. And I'm just throwing numbers out here, don't hold my feet to the fire on it, but like, ten dollars a month for two gigs or something. Along those lines, or five dollars a month for one gig per month, just again, throwing something out there, that's what.
You need paper trails for audit papers.
Yes, 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 and that's what.
Right.
Yeah, but.
They need invoices.
Yeah, and I've got. I've already, we've, I've already got an invoice kind of set up, so to speak, so, um, that's been requested in the past to produce one for like public health and things, so. Kind of, um, so, but yeah, that gives me some guidance as far as how to deal with that position, so, um. But.
We can, we can talk our way through it with you.
Yeah, so, um, I wasn't sure if there, and the only reason why I said policy was because I wasn't sure if we needed a policy. So, that's why I was just trying to get the ball started, so, um, but.
I don't think we do, I, I mean, if you get one towards.
Right.
For the nine-one-one.
I mean, I, I don't see any, I'm, potentially whatever we do with this, if another consultant ever has to be on, that's gonna be a. Long-term consultant, maybe you, you use this as an example, you got a precedent that you're, are working on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that give you what you need?
Yes, it, it kind of governs, I mean, as far as what I need to do with that and that kind of, I think. Answers a, answers some questions that we've, I think we've needed, so.
Are you here also for VA office camera?
Yeah, I, she'd make sure you're doing.
I like Cory's here too.
Yeah, so, um, before I get, we get into the throes of the, that particular camera for the, for the VA office. I wanna just set something, cause there was value, I don't think that was given to the board when we were first getting into Vercata, okay? They added that the value behind this system, the big thing that you guys are gonna be the most concerned about is. I have stated a five-year policy replacement on all devices for pretty much countywide, okay? That's not gonna have to apply here, okay? Because as long as the device is licensed, it is covered, okay? Whether it's five years from now or fifty years from now, that device is covered. Yeah, um, there's, and they, they replaced the device, it's not a question, and they've replaced it with a comparable device. So if it does get to be twenty years and they don't have that model anymore, you get a comparable device. So, and that's as long as the license, or the device is licensed, and that goes for everything in Vercata, not just cameras.
How'd you come up with this camera system versus another one and what's the cost of the license is gonna go up every year for fifty years? Versus what you have to replace five years?
You can, you can go, uh, you can buy them in bulk, uh, one, three, five and ten, as far as years are concerned. Um, the, it's two hundred dollars for one year and then that's, gets stepped up and you get. More value over more time, so you get a discount if you would purchase five years or even bigger discount if you purchase ten years.
These are the cameras they're putting up on there?
Everything Vercata based and cameras are included, okay?
What else do we?
And Cory's putting a camera system in.
Mm-hmm, he's putting that in right now.
What do you mean by everything Vercata based?
So, it, we, we've been putting other devices in there as well to, to monitor the server room over there, the badges, the badge systems that we've been putting in. That control the doors, all of that stuff is one system in itself and they all, it all talks within itself.
I, I guess, what, what is the point of you coming in today?
I just wanted to blanket and let, let you know what the value was, cause I don't think that was given to the board at the time that we were looking at this system, okay? Um, the point of me coming in was to talk about this particular camera, okay, because it's, it wasn't included in any, uh.
So they're really wasn't gonna take action, you're just giving us some information.
Well, there's a take actions, there is.
There's currently not a VA office camera.
Right.
Oh, we don't have one.
We don't have one, we have one in the waiting room and we have one outside, but we don't have one in her office at this point.
Just so we can watch, make sure Wheezy's working?
Yeah, basically.
You want one in your private office?
I have two cameras in my office now and I want, I would love to have one kind of in that corner where the desk is gonna be. That would show the desk and the conference area there in the front, because if somebody is sitting at my desk and all of a sudden they shoot off like a rocket. And I hit my button, which hopefully will have a button, and the police need to, or the sheriff, they need to see what's going on in my office. And they need to see who's doing what, I don't care about privacy for me, because if I'm not, if I'm doing something, I don't want people to see I shouldn't be doing that at work. My opinion, it's more security and we've had some issues here in the courthouse and over there, I'm not gonna have people outside my door watching to make sure I'm alive and okay. You know, and I'm gonna be over there by myself, so, all I asked, waiting room, that's great. I wa, I always wanted one in the office, we, the chief went over and walked through the building and he walked in there and goes, where's the camera?
Yep.
He even looked up and saw that there wasn't a camera in the office space, so.
So you're on board with what Jake's wanting to do?
I just want a camera, so however that could spend, that's up to Jake and you guys, I just wanna make sure that for safety, I have a camera.
Standard camera is two thousand dollars, that includes the license, so, per.
That includes a five-year license?
Yes.
I thought there was a cost savings to five year, no?
Well, I mean, the, for one year, it's two hundred dollars for that license with that camera. And then, once you expand upon that, it's gonna be, um, two thousand dollars for the device and the license.
So we're gonna switch our courthouse cameras over to Vercata?
Eventually, I would like to, and that's a discussion that we'll have tomorrow in the IT committee.
These work pretty good.
So.
Can you use these same cameras and just switch to the Vercata system?
No, because they're built differently, they're designed differently.
So how come we didn't use Vercata in the courthouse?
Cause I wasn't consulted at the time when we put, put the cameras in, that was, that bear was put in motion.
You know, and there's a good fit for over there.
Mm-hmm, we should have it all under one.
All one thing, door locks, we've been talking about that forever.
And, but there, and that camera system for here is coming up on five years. So.
Cory.
Go ahead.
Are you on there yet, Cory?
Yeah, I'm here.
I just questioned, and you put the security system in my wife's new boutique and I think that whole system with five cameras was. Considerably less than two thousand dollars per camera, so.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Just, why is this one camera two thousand dollars? What's, what's so great about this one compared to the?
I am, that's, it's tough, um, they have a like proprietary system that they operate off of. It's all cloud storage versus onsite storage and that's why you're paying those licenses, um. I guess you'd have to compare them side by side to tell me if it's better or worse, um. I mean, the, the reason it's Vercata over here is cause Jake's RFP had Vercata specked out on there. Um, typically, we don't install Vercata, but we did it because that's what the RFP was.
So Kyle's probably isn't Vercata then.
No, yes, I'm not Vercata.
You're not Vercata, no, and Kyle's is a, there's no license for Kyle's.
So, and once that breaks, you gotta buy new, or gotta buy again.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm locking a whole building for, yeah, I mean, sometimes you can afford to buy new. Every five or ten years for what you, cause you're spending a hell of a lot less. I mean, I spent, I don't know, the same four thousand dollars for a full system and you're gonna spend that for one camera. I mean, you afford to buy new every once in a while, if you're gonna spend that for one, one camera.
There's also extra functionality in there that I can grant the department heads access to those cameras, right now, it's, it's a difficult process if I were to do something like that. And I've had requests for that.
What did Vercata give you any?
Where they wanna look at their own camera, you mean?
Vercata give you any, uh, how long will?
We're already hooked, we're kinda hooked to this Vercata.
Indication of what their licensing fees are gonna be year to year over ten years or twenty or fifty like you said?
For one camera, it's eighteen hundred dollars for ten years right now. So.
For ten years.
For ten years.
Well, I, I mean, we're kinda hooked to this Vercata system, aren't we Cory, I mean, with everything else.
Over, yeah, at the V, over here at the public health building, yep.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have to go with that then, cause we're hooked, but I mean, we go do this courthouse deal, so we're gonna have to. Get smarter with this spending of money, cause this two thousand dollars a camera is, that'd be just, to me, that's just crazy.
Well, you won't have to spend on the camera from that point on. You, it's yours, it's done.
And they will upgrade the camera after you.
They'll update as soon as it fails, this is where use it until it dies will actually work.
But I, I think, I don't know, I've never.
But the license cost continues?
Yeah.
I mean, I never, an RFP should not be so brand-specific. And I've, I've never heard, I mean, I've specked fire trucks and stuff in the past, you don't spec a Pierce fire truck.
Yeah.
I, I just, I mean, we'll have to order this, this one right now, but I've never been, anyways.
Jake, it'd be nice to see side by side, kind of like what Cory's saying, down the road. You'll break that out over a ten-year period or even a longer and say what, what it would cost if you had to replace a different system every five years and buy the cameras. Versus what the licensing costs without having to buy a camera, that's, I think, what we're getting at, so we kind of know the comparisons.
We can do that, and that's, and that's, a lot of that discussion is in. Is intended for our committee meeting tomorrow. We were gonna have access about, control about access control. Some of the cameras, things along those lines, okay? The the intent of this particular function was to talk about this camera over there at that building. But I wanted to let you know. What? There is a value to this system long term. So.
So the two thousand dollar camera and license, is that a five year license?
Yes.
They said it was eighteen hundred dollars for ten year.
The licenses. We're purchasing for five years and we're including a camera. The device itself.
For two thousand.
For two thousand.
Since I don't know the actual price of the camera, it's hard to break that down on that, which is gonna.
It's about eleven hundred dollars for the camera itself, about, depending on what you do for retention within the camera.
Well, I used to did, R F P was written that way, so your hands are kind of tied to make any other choices like this. Throw it all out, re R F P and then it back backs everything else up to get Louise moving.
Yeah.
But yeah. We can't go and have Cory throw one of his access control standard cameras on the way it sounds, so.
But, okay, so the takeaway here is we're gonna move forward with the camera over at the V A office, correct?
Oh, this is.
Louise is moving over there and she wants to feel secure about it and we have to.
Oh, I like the idea that the sheriff can see what's going on in that office if she hits a panic button.
Right, and I can't do that with this camera system.
So the sheriff's office, who will have access to that camera then other than her would be the sheriff's office and the compter?
Right, you say that again, you can't?
I cannot make this system. The current courthouse system available for the. The sheriff unless they are within these. Bounds, Verkata, I can't.
So if you switch, what you're saying is eventually if we switch the course up courthouse over to Verkata. Then you can.
It's a cloud based system. It's not an on premise system.
We're on premise.
Anyways.
We're gonna need him.
So you may help me with carrying money for Louise then?
Yeah, we have to buy one, but yes. We didn't, it wasn't included.
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna be less than two thousand dollars. So.
Like going on a Harley Davidson, hundred dollar, hundred.
Boys, I'm gonna go down to the local gun shop and buy a nine millimeter for about six hundred dollars. At least you can return fire.
So.
If it comes in pink, I'll be open to it.
You save your hearing. Well, I guess.
Yeah, we need.
Make a motion to, uh. Move forward with the purchase of this, uh. Office camera for the V A.
So yeah.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vice chair votes aye. Motion carries.
So I'm standing, I'm standing here right now in Louise's office. She wants it behind her, correct?
Looking towards the door.
Where the Cory, where the desk is gonna go, like if you walk in the door on the left.
Yep.
It's to the health room. If it's in a corner somewhere there, so it can see the front part of the office. Does that make sense?
Yep, yep, I'm gonna run that wire right now, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, yeah, cause Dave and I have to come over anyway to measure something, so if you want me to, we can come over now.
Sounds perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Cory.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Guys, feel free to add it.
Anything else you guys need from me?
Yeah, I will not be there tomorrow. I have a, I I second executive. Board orientation.
Gotcha, okay. Thanks Jake.
Thanks for coming up. Okay, we'll move on to the reappointment of Mike Peterson to the conservation board for a five year term ending twelve thirty one twenty nine.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion a second.
Very engaged and enjoys doing it.
Any discussion to give Terry time to write? Good?
I'm out of words.
Just trying to give you a little time. Believe in it. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Vice chair votes aye.
No, that's fine. When I looked over and you were looking at her, I realized what was going on.
Don't wanna have that pen start smoking. More complaint for a couple times.
That time of the year where she'll need multiple pens or she'll run out of ink.
Very festive up here. If you get a chance, go down to the sheriff's office.
They didn't.
Yeah, we were down there the other day.
Looks like the Griswold's down there.
Looks like he helped him decorate, doesn't it? That's a good point. I think last year he did too. They got more room, they're cheap.
They get a lot of donations too, that's amazing, yeah.
The cold hearted pastors working here.
Good. Next two done. Okay, let's move on to discuss and take action for the appointment of Jamie Gross to the board of health for a three year term ending twelve thirty one twenty seven.
I'll make the motion to appoint Jamie Gross to the board of health for a three year term.
Have a motion?
I will second that.
You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vice chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move on to discuss, take action of the reappointment. Of Marcy Larson to the board of health for a three year term ending twelve thirty one twenty seven.
Make that motion to reappoint Marcy to the board of health for three years.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, vice chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, wow, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Jamie's been on there for quite a while. Should be a good chair. Glad they got Marcy to stay.
Megan?
Engaged for. Yesterday, the cat went on. And, uh. Norquist, Norquist. Doctor Norquist, she was in my, it used to always be Doug was mine and now she's doing it. And she she humps while she put in, put them in her teeth. I thought that's a lot better. Doug used to ask you questions with his hands in your mouth.
For our final discussion, take action of the day. Reappointment Penny Kenny and Christie Rickers to the historical preservation commission for a three year term ending twelve thirty one twenty seven. Have a motion?
I'll make that motion to reappoint.
Motion by Kyle?
Second.
They do.
Second by Ty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Vice chair votes aye. Motion carries. Moves us on to citizens input. We have nobody in the room. Anybody online? Move on to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to second.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Would be terrible if you didn't go second.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.